Okay. We'll start the meeting and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call. Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Toni Corpe.
Here.
Bruce Rablwan.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Stokstedde-Dietrich here. Joanne Smith, not here. Kevin Grover.
Here.
How come Mitch's name isn't on there?
Because he said he was kind of off for the summer.
Oh, I see. He's just here in spirit. Okay. We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are these on? He was sharing. Okay. Alrighty. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Oh, hang on. If I could just make one comment here. Number five, just so everyone is aware, was the one that had the name to be determined on the original agenda. So it's filled in now, but I just wanted to make sure that that was noticed. The other thing I would like added is under the closed session, which we do my evaluation, but I will also give a short update on negotiations with forty-seven ninety-eight that we've, and I just wanted noted so that we don't do something we shouldn't be talking about in the closed session. So those are the only two.
Your mic went out.
Test, test.
There, now they're. No, it's still barely working, I think. Okay, you don't have anything else?
No, that's all I have.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public open forum, nobody. Okay. Alright. May I have, well, let's see. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have questions.
Yeah, I do too.
Okey dokey. Shoot, you're first.
I got a list. Okay, I went through the payable summary and I just had some questions. The PTO T services that we're paying to Rainy Lake Medical Center, do we get funding for that?
Through special ed, is this? Working? No, 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 no.
I know.
The OTPT, we get through special ed and you know, that stuff is going to be claimed. Now, it is not a hundred percent funded. I mean, and I'm just gonna throw it out there that that's the way special ed services work. The cross subsidy, there was a big gain going forward here, which that was one of the legislative ups, if you will, to forty-four percent, which is, was like at seven or eight percent.
Wow.
So it's a huge amount, but there's still a big gap. So, and again, there are, again, I don't know.
But we're obligated to provide those services?
We have to, yeah. Yeah, we don't just provide for anyone that would ask for it.
Right. Yeah, to meet criteria.
Right, okay. I just want, just asking, because it's sixteen thousand dollars. What is the, what is B L U U M of Minnesota?
It's one of the softwares we just added.
I don't know off the top.
A software?
It's eleven thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars.
It's one of the softwares I added for next year.
For the elementary school?
Not in my head. I didn't, I forgot my computer on my head.
Okay. Okay.
North America's largest learning catalyst, United Educators.
Speak up.
Says Blue is North America's largest learning catalyst, United Educators, with Antic Learning Solutions. I don't know what piece they used on that.
Without looking at it, I don't know if it's district funded or if it's falls ed funded, you know, I mean, if somebody got.
It just seems like a lot and I'd never heard of it before.
Yeah, it's new. I just don't know that's.
Okay, we're still paying for a police liaison?
We have a ten thousand dollar contract. It's not for the liaison. It's technically for city services and it's been in place long before my time and so.
You say that's per year too, right?
It's for a year, yep. And so I think we paid two installments.
Yeah, it comes out of Safe School Funding.
And a lot.
Comes out of what?
Safe Schools Funding.
And I think what it started out, and again, this is just a thought, years ago, like for, oh, I just went mind, the drug free dare and certain services where they would come in. Now dares went by the wayside. I'm not saying they come to a lot of our events, you know, they don't get charged, not saying they have to or don't have to, you know.
So what are we paying for?
So that's really what we're paying for is.
I thought it was liaison services too. There's a contract that comes.
No, there's a contract, but it was before we ever had quote unquote a liaison. We have a student officer that still comes and deals with.
But that's our job.
Well, again, correct. I don't consider, I mean, it's been in place, like I say, to offset some of their services and.
And I guess to add to that now, as far as I know, Indus and some of the other schools, is this working?
Yep.
No, it's red.
You just think you hear me.
Well, I hear you. Fine, okay. Like Indus and some of the other schools, I mean, as far as I know, it's that, that's what they do because, for example, if a kid, you know, if there was some kind of trouble with the school, they would call the officer and then that officer, who is usually the same person at all time, the same person that knows more about the school goings on, is the one that comes over to deal with it. Can I ask Tim to talk a little bit about that to help Jessica understand? Do you mind?
Well, I just, I get what you're saying, but I just think we're paying ten thousand dollars for something, we need, we should know what we're paying for.
And again, that is.
But nobody can, I mean, nobody can specifically tell me exactly what they do for that money. If you call nine-one-one, they have to come.
Correct.
We shouldn't be paying over and above for that service.
No, and there are things when we've had issues with students. Now, we had our first time that they wouldn't come help with something. They considered it a non-event here. It was actually in Missy's school this spring. It's the first time I'm ever aware that they would not come and assist, you know, with, and again, it wasn't a life or death emergency situation, but it was something we felt that they should come and talk with the student and the family, you know, about, and they didn't. And so, I mean, that, in my mind, is what they were here to do. I mean, they used to, well, they still do run license for us, you know, different things that technically they don't have to do, but it was having that.
Relationship?
Well, you could call it a liaison officer, but it wasn't a officer housed in the building twenty-four seven. You know, Dane Olson, for several, you know, years was our go-to person. And again, we would, you know, when we're having issues, when he had, was on shift, he would then come and help work through some of those. Again, not saying they had had a tobacco or an alcohol violation or something that they would have had to, but he did come as a juvenile officer and help without being a true full-time, you know, officer. And like I say, I think, again, a chunk of it was for dare, which has come and gone, you know. Now, we've done similar, but we've used our grant program because there isn't a dare officer anymore.
And that's, it didn't come and go, we just don't have the officer anymore.
Correct.
They don't have anybody.
Yeah, correct, correct, correct.
So, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I'd like to see the contract we have that requires us to pay all this money. I want to know what we're paying for. I mean.
It's reasonable.
Okay, thank you. You guys look at me like I'm crazy.
I look at everybody that way.
Do you want to pull not to pay it?
No, I don't want, I mean, if we're obligated per contract, we've got to pay the contract, but I'd like to see what the contract says going forward and does it get renegotiated every so often or?
Right, I guess I would question, because if you guys called him and he didn't come and we're paying ten thousand dollars.
Sounds like it's worth revisiting.
Yeah, that's all I wanted.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay, no, I'm not done yet.
That's what I meant, next on your list.
Okay. Marco Technologies?
Marco is copiers.
Sixty thousand dollars?
That's not the end of it for the copiers throughout the.
Sixty thousand?
It's just over sixty thousand.
All new iPads, Chromebooks.
What was that? But Marco is one of our copier too and I mean.
Yeah, that was iPads and Chromebooks.
Okay.
And is that through some kind of grant or is that, how is that funded?
Whatever. That is the replacement cycle for the student computers.
Got it.
And we set.
That one is specific to them.
Correct. Well, so there's also a charge to Dell for sixty-two thousand.
Yeah, that's Chromebooks.
Was that Chromebooks, Chrome, Chromebooks or was that the computers in this lab? We set seventy-five thousand a year aside technology-wise. We're technically on a five-year cycle. And not going to say that covers everything, but that's where most of our tech stuff is coming out of. Again, you got to think of non-COVID because we've replaced, you know, or bought a bunch of stuff, but we're on a five-year cycle. Sometimes we get six, maybe even seven years out of stuff, but we started doing that.
Is it staggered cycle though? I mean, or does everything get replaced every five years?
Typically, all the computers. They want it, they don't want it on a, you know, twenty percent a year type deal. They want all the pain one time. And so, at least for computers, they're on a one-time for the most part shot. Chromebooks, different situation because they've come in at different times. We'll use them as long as we can, you know, type deal, and then replace them somewhat as they go. Now, that being said, we're stretching. We're in, I think, year six right now. Mike, Mike felt we needed to update the computers in the lab. So those are being done. No other computers are being done at the time. You know, our, our computers are fine right now, still working. They're not having to spend, you know, a ton of time fixing things. So we're stretching them farther. So, long story short, we're going to get out of whack a little bit as far as replacement, but I think that's good.
Okay, because this, I mean, between the two, it was about a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, without looking at the invoice, I don't know, I don't recall which we got from which, but one was iPad, Chromebooks.
Okay. And then, we talked before about doing a review and paring down to the necessary software licenses that were being used because I noticed on the budget, there's a lot of licensures that were renewed. Did we do that?
And we've went through and we've reduced some. Missy and Tim are giving input on some and monitoring some. Some have been cut and unfortunately, there's from time to time, things that get added, like the Renaissance, for instance. Tim maybe can help me if Missy was here. We have one more year. It's a three-year agreement on one of the major softwares, which is going to go away. It's being replaced with this Fastbridge that we have. So there will be a, I'm going to say a significant, you know, ten grand is significant in my book, you know, savings on that one. A lot of the others, it's going to take a little bit of time to truly monitor. You know, everyone says, I need it, I need it.
Of course, of course, of course.
I just wanted to make sure that was still on everybody's mind. And then, I had a question on the cell phones. Yeah, so is that four hundred and fifty dollars a month?
No, it's for a six-month, it's seventy-five dollars a month.
I think to the side, it said from zero, one to.
Oh, did it? Oh, okay, okay, okay. Because I was like, holy moly.
Some of them were like a two fifty or something like that, but then they were bunched for the dates on the side.
Okay, thank you.
And there's, without counting exactly, I think six or seven employees that that cover, that have that. Myself being one. Tim and Missy are each in there, the athletic director, community head director, tech person, or the two tech people. Yeah, Nappals.
Tom Hall.
Oh, Tom Hall, maybe there's nine.
Possibly Cape, I saw them there too. Was it Janessa?
No, well, Janessa has hers through her grant. That's not.
Okay.
No, that would be Angie.
Yeah, that's what she said. Yeah.
Yeah, there's nine.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, and then what is reward day?
Reward day is at the end of the year where they try incentivizing the students by grade to do the best that they can on their tests, at the end of the year test. And so they've tried incentivizing kids to give it their best, so to speak. So I'm going to say like the elementary, they take and do the bouncy houses and those things. You know, over here, they've done a variety of things over time. You know, they've had, Tim could speak to that, you know, the last day where there's activities and it's trying to incentivize kids to take the state tests as serious as possible.
It is a lot of money. Oh, and then I had a question.
It's all money.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay, that's good.
Still, still money.
I noticed on the credit card one, all the decor and the giveaways for the football float for the Fourth of July is on there. Is the school paying for that? Because I'll be honest with you, I paid for all that out of my own pocket when I was doing it.
That would come out of their stream.
There's a student activity fund that.
Does big money.
It's their, it's their raised money. You know, just like student council.
Yeah, yeah, we had our own account, yep.
We don't, I mean, unless it goes against regulations, they get to use it on student activity, you know, stuff.
Not everybody will though.
Yeah, I know. And then, okay, that's all my questions on the budget. Thank you.
Tina, did you have any?
Nope, she had mine.
Okey dokey, I forgot where we're at now.
This is on the full consent agenda though, right?
Yep.
Because I do have a couple of questions myself, if you don't mind. So, can you just remind me, like number five, with the hire of Mason Meyer, contingent upon having the junior varsity team? So what, is it the volunteer coaches on that are on like site if Chad needed to be somewhere, there's somebody?
No, there is, that contingency is, if you recall, like with girls hockey last year, we had a varsity, I'm going to say, and two assistants. The one assistant is technically to assist the varsity. The second one is technically in charge of the JV.
Gotcha, okay.
And so if we don't have enough kids, like we did with girls hockey last year, that position technically, even though we're hiring, they can start planning. But if we get to where, I mean, to be honest, the last two years, well, they had three games last year, you know, for JV. Some of it was our issue, some was others, but I mean, if the kids don't come out, we might not need it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Number six thirteen, graduation requirements under the one and only reading of the attachments. I noticed the, we've had a lot of discussion lately on weighted grades. Is that, that's just going to stay the way it is?
No, it's coming in our handbook update, which will come in August and Tim will talk about it. There's a ton of stuff that there's going to be a recommendation for change there. Well, some, some.
Some good, some not.
Some like and some don't, but I'll just forewarn you, there's going to be a recommendation to go away from it. And then we have a two-year cycle of bringing down the graduating with honors because, you know, some have had weighted grades for this year. Like the seniors this coming year have had a year of having weighted. So I think it was three-nine or three-nine, three-nine or something. And then the next year, I think it'll go down to three-eight-five is our recommendation, you know, for that.
Last question on this is the credit for learning. Is that new, the credit for employment with healthcare providers? I guess as I was reading the red part that was added in there, it was the number six twenty on that same one and only reading of the attached. Sorry, I don't actually have a picture of it, if you want that. I'm just curious if that's something new and I guess just.
Well, anything in red is new recommendations from the MSBA.
I guess I'm just curious on my own, like, account with me having my sister at my house and Carson being an employee for that, does that, is that something that she would apply for then? Sorry, I maybe could have asked this later, but I just, it was all new.
Question for anybody.
And then how are we?
Hang on, just give me a second.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so this is for, for students that qualify in grades eleven and twelve.
Correct.
So you asked for your sister.
No, for Carson, because she would be.
Okay.
An employee of that company that pays out.
It's possible she could qualify.
So how, how, she, how does the information get to the students to know this? Like is there, I mean, for the ones that do work at the care center and stuff? I'm just wondering what we do to share, like, share with kids that we have that as an option.
Well, and I'm going to have to look at, no. What's that?
Well, she said, because kids aren't reading the policies and I said, no, they're not.
Well, no, and that's coming from, and again, I'm going to have to look at, without reading the whole thing, I was thinking that had to do with, I just went mind blank. Tim, what does, you and Donnie just went, that's work-based learning, but I could be wrong. I'm going to have to go back and look at the whole thing.
Sorry?
That's brand new. That's just in the legislation.
Okay, because it just says they have to work three hundred and fifty hours and then they get an eleven.
And it's in a current tech area.
I don't think that's through work-based learning. I think this is something separate. It might fall under that kind of, but it's, this is separate that they just put in that legislation. So we're still trying to get interpretations and figure out what it means and how we're going to communicate it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I have.
And just so you're, like the one below that, six twenty-one, like this read act, I mean, they're writing things and they're, in fact, I came across today, they were sharing some of the programs that are going to call, I mean, I hate to say it, they're writing things and developing them as we go.
On the fly.
Like Fastbridge is going to qualify for one of the qualifying programs. There's still more to come, happens that we have it. So I mean, that's.
So should those only be one and only?
This has come from MSB because they have to be in place by July one.
Okay, and you'll get the policies as to how it would all work.
Well, correct, but I mean, like you say, the read act stuff, they're developing how we're going to eat all of it as we go, I hate to say it. You know, it's, it's kind of like the unemployment, you know, they approve money for it and here's the people in it and go, you know. Well, I'm just being honest with you because we're, Juneteenth, we initiated it and yeah, it's not in any contract. Go. You know, and so you're figuring it out.
So what does it mean, the one and only reading?
Because typically, we have to do two readings. You know, you read it once and then, you know, you can come back, you can technically make adjustments, whatever, and you approve it at the second reading. The, for when things change or emergency implementation, you can do them in one shot. And that's what they're saying is when they came out in May, and of course.
And all these are new ones that came out?
Well, they're all changed. They're not new policies, but they had updates. You know, that there just wasn't time. They weren't, I'm going to say they.
Yep, because when I was reading, I was like, well, I didn't think it was new, some of them.
No, and some of them we might have just done three months ago or something, but there were changes that, you know, our locks and friends, got to be in place, you know. And so, again, will they change two months from now? Could again, if they find things that, hey, this isn't what we so desire, but they gave the authority that it can be a.
A one reading.
One and done until it changes or, you know, gets in your cycle.
Sure how they get on the one and.
That's why the rest, as you go back, our second reading or we even have one that's a first reading that was sitting there waiting for us still.
Okey dokey. Any more questions? Okay, we had a motion. Do we have a second?
No, we didn't get a motion yet. There were just some questions before we got to.
Oh, that's right.
Because again, someone could have pulled something.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Okey doke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now going to jump down to the action items. Okay. Under the strategic plan category of improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now I'm going to read this. Whereas the school board policy seven oh six establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the IFAL school district board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute four six five point zero three states the school board may accept a gift grant or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public Schools ISD three six one accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. The Dan Baker Foundation at-risk youth program, for the at-risk youth program, four thousand dollars. Marshall Knutson Fund for the at-risk youth program, five thousand dollars. Falls Education Foundation donation to ISD three sixty-one for projects, twenty thousand six hundred and seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Bronco Track Boosters for the track coach, two thousand five hundred dollars. Okay. All those in favor?
Can I ask a question? What was that first one? What's the at-risk?
Okay, so I was just going to comment that if you, and I was looking for which, we just hired, and I just got to find which one. Number fourteen? It's Jamie Shobloom for the aftercare coordinator effective seven thirty. That's to fund that program.
Oh, got it.
Tim, speak more to it if you want. It's, you want to speak more to it on, on the aftercare?
Sure, I can. What it is, it's a position that we actually had created for students and young adults in the community who are dealing with substance abuse and addiction. And we're creating pro-social activities for that and we wrote grants back in two thousand nineteen into twenty. We had hydra coordinator and we had our first activity planned and COVID, we closed like the week we were going to have our first activity.
Of course.
So everything has been on hold. That money was held by the Falls Education Foundation that we got from the grant. They held it for us until we were able to get to a point where we were ready to move forward. We had that town hall meeting this winter and the judge called Youth Risk Coalition together and we've been working on what can we do. We had that money and we went ahead and hired someone. Now, our first activity is planned for July twenty-seventh and we're going to start trying to get things going about once a week, offer an activity, a pro-social activity. And Dave Baker was actually up here for that town hall meeting and he came over and met with us and we talked to him about what we had planned and so we finally got it off the ground. So it's been a long time coming, but I think it's a really much needed thing for the community, so it should be really positive.
They used to do something similar at kind of, oh, my sister ran it for kids.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Okey doke. Let's see. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, resolution, or, I mean, one C.
No, one B. There's, there's one that doesn't have a resolution.
Approve MSHSL cooperative agreement with the Cornerstone Christian School for Boys Hockey affected the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year. Could I have a motion?
Can we talk about it first? Or do we have to have a motion?
We're supposed to have a motion and a second and it can be voted down, but technically, I mean, unless it's, you know, informational where, you know, with some, we all know what we're dealing with, so technically, we should have a motion and a second to discuss it. If it was something that you didn't know, what are you talking about? Then I'm technically, or we can have, here's what we're talking about.
So your motion does not mean you're voting for it?
Okay, I like a motion to talk about it.
Could I have a second?
Then I'll second.
Okay, now let's talk. You want to start?
Well, I mean, we kind of knew this was coming in terms of hockey and I mean, I've talked to people in the community that participate in the hockey program, both youth and high school, as well as some coaches. There's varying opinions. The majority of people are against this because not that it's going to start anything in the next two years because there's technically only eighteen students at the Cornerstone School at the high school level, but they've got a lot of elementary school kids and to me, this sets a precedent and opens the door. And if we were to approve it, it's, it's hard to go back on something once it's approved. And so if we saw it begin to make a negative impact to our program, it'd be hard to take it back. And I understand it's only a two-year agreement, but once you start doing something, it's, you're over the hump. So that's my opinion.
Any other opinions out here?
And that is why, and I'm just throwing out, co-ops are individual per sport and that is one of the reasons. You know, just like, I was at volleyball last night. You know, we had a conversation with a sport, an activity that had large numbers. You know, and again, not saying right or wrong, because to be honest, you know, Cornerstone, that they're doing it because they want activities. They went away from, I'm going to say the Rainy River District for, I have no idea why, none of my business, but they're not able to participate in activities now. So they're looking for a place, just to be honest, that their kids can participate. The only, what would you call it, experience was the spring, which I think the spring coaches, you need track, have no issue with. Think it worked well. And again, could it take someone's place? Definitely could. And as our sports get smaller, I just, just throwing it out, those kids for the most part can't come over and go to school here unless either A, they're native and have that right, or B.
They move.
Well, they have to get US citizenship and that's just, you know.
Almost a dual.
It's very, you know, on possibility. So, I mean, it's not like, you know, Little Fork either come here or tough luck or, I mean, would you ever want a conversation? Because the same thing could go. You know, we were talking, again, a few years back when they went, football went south. I made a call trying to see if they would go up. And again, it's the same conversation. It could take some kid's spot and we weren't going to say, hey, you got to come play here, we're going. And unfortunately, that's where a lot of our activities are and I'm just speaking. We might not have a JV here, whether it's this. this year, two years, or maybe numbers get better over time and the sport's full, but right now, I'm just saying, whether they they have at least one kid in hockey that is interested, and that's why they're requesting, because the same thing came out, I'm just gonna be honest, the girls hockey coach, why can't we do girls hockey? Well, we've reached out, they don't have anyone, and they have to pay a fee, they pay the uh admission, you know, for each sport, just like we do if they belong to the high school, so they don't wanna do it if they don't have any kids, you know, and it makes sense, they had someone interested in softball, it didn't work out, they still had to pay the, I'm gonna say hundred, hundred and fifty bucks, you know, to belong for that sport, so you know, it makes sense why football hasn't come across, you know.
I guess I would say to to, I understand your reasoning there, but what I would say too is we have enough kids in youth, in our youth hockey program, in our rec hockey program, to feed into our high school program, I think we probably need, and I would ask Tim to maybe take this on, we need to look at why some of these kids aren't playing high school hockey, there's gotta be reasons.
Yeah, cuz we actually had enough kids in Bantams this year, the first time in ten, like ten years, to have an A and a B team.
And that's another concern of mine, we we are, there's already Fort Francis kids playing in the youth level at P U in the Bantam level, um that's a concern I have, partly because what are we doing to the Fort Francis program?
Yeah.
But the other part is that, you know, I I don't think we entered into this relationship with this co-op um seeing the big picture, so since the start till now, I've had a lot of thought about it, and I definitely don't, I definitely don't agree with where this could go, but secondly, I've had so many experiences, both professionally and personally, kids receiving kids, kids leaving, um I understand the culture of Fort Francis hockey, and and it's a different culture than we have here.
It is very different.
And uh that concerns me, cuz if the kids were even here attending International Falls High School, absolutely. I don't like, I don't like the idea that they're not here in school, attending here. I get, I I'm concerned about why they don't co-op with somebody in Canada, I'm concerned with um.
That's my question too.
And I, the only comment, I, Tony and I spoke yesterday, I can reach out for more information, but the Rainy River District, you know, is, I wanted to say it was seven schools, I thought you said nine or eleven or something, they walked away for that, for some reason, it went private, I I don't.
Right, but they walked away from being under that district, but they could still co-op in, and I think maybe there's just a sour taste in that in their mouth where they don't wanna cross that line, but I feel that a lot of them are living in Canada and they're paying those taxes, they should be utilizing those programs that are offered there, it's just my thought on it.
Well, the the last thing that I'd like to say is, I I question, why aren't we developing our kids?
Yes.
Where's the, where what's, where's the problem line?
That's what I.
We should be developing our kids, and we don't always have the pleasure of having the most talented kids, no, no program does, but you're tasked with developing what you have, you know, um that's just the way it is.
Yep.
You know, so I I I just have way too many, way too many concerns.
Let me ask this then, and and again, this is a vote, I just need some direction, if if they were interested in another activity, should I say the door is closed, or would we take it one by, you know, I'm just saying, say.
We've already taken it one by one, so I feel.
Well, they all want it one by one, and I'm just saying, are we open, or is this kind of, we wish we wouldn't have went that route and don't bring anymore, you know?
Well, I I don't say that, I don't say that I wish we wouldn't have gone this road, but I will say at this time, that we should probably let it play out for a while.
Okay.
To see how it works, or doesn't work.
I agree, I guess, like I, as you guys know from my email yesterday, I was fully till the tenth hour advocating for it, and then I got two pieces of information at the last minute that drastically did a ninety degree, and I'm an absolute no for it now, um after I found out some background, I don't regret moving forward with the other sports, no, I think there was no, you know, no ill intent, anything, and I think it was a good idea.
Like the team versus, you know, individual, it made a difference. I also kinda feel like, how would we feel if Little Fork right now was talking about a co-op with Fort Francis, you know, you still have them skipping through your town and then coming over, just like they would be to us, and I I I don't know.
Creating bad feelings.
I guess my understanding from that aspect is that Fort Francis, Rainy River will not co-op with Cornerstone Christian School.
Has they been approached though, like, or was it just?
And it wasn't Cornerstone's choice to leave the district either, is my understanding.
And I don't know, like I said, I didn't ask any questions of what the, you know, reasoning or, you you know.
But they still have children living in their district that are paying the taxes that should be able to use those programs.
Yep.
They do. So, I mean, I could see if they did, if they didn't offer anything over there, then to look at it in a different way, but I struggle with this one too.
I have a question, what what did Minnesota High School League say about it?
I couldn't find anything for country to.
Well, the the only piece I can tell you is the high school league does grant co-ops with, we have one with uh Rainy River for girls hockey in place right now, just like for many years, Lake of the Woods had with Rainy River for, right now they do for boys hockey, but they lost girls hockey or dropped it, that's where, and again, seventy miles away, I'm not saying it's a good relationship, you know, I mean, ideal relationship maybe is the right word.
So are these just border issues, you think?
It's it's a, where they've allowed it when it, I'm gonna say quote unquote makes sense, I think if we wanted to, not just picking on, co-op with Winnipeg, they would go, no, this doesn't work, but they've also done it with um like Minnesota and Iowa schools that are border to border, or Minnesota, North Dakota, yeah, you know, that type that it just somewhat makes sense, but again, I'm gonna use North Dakota, middle of the state couldn't become a high school league, and they can't become a high school league school on their own, is the other thing, it has to be a co-op agreement, you know, um Cornerstone couldn't join the high school league on their own, you know, that's just not an option.
And I did try to go through like Lake of the Woods' old policies to see if I could find an agreement somewhere, but I couldn't even find that, so I don't know.
But I mean, the high school league does approve, I mean, we have them in place right now with several other sports um that we did have done in the past six months, I'm gonna say, and so it is doable, but it is a sport by sport because you don't have to approve each, or you could have one, and we use vol- I'm gonna use volleyball, that we have very good numbers, and you could say, just because of that, eh, no, you know, or whatever it is, no.
Okay, so is there any more discussion? Okay, so since we had a motion to discuss and a second to discuss, then I assume our next step is to say all those in.
Yeah, we have to take a vote on it.
And so I'm going to ask for all those in favor. Okay, none, um opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous opposed. So, motion failed. All right, we are now to resol- or to one C resolution relating to the election of school board member and calling the school district general election, now, um what I'm gonna, the, it's a.
It's a four-page resolution, and so I'm just recommending, we make a motion and a second to approve the resolution as printed.
It's just a big old four-page thing, uh could I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, okay, now. Under action item two, uh under the strategic plan concept of maintain our facilities to be welcoming, safe, and efficient for use by students and the community, uh two-way resolution adopting the school district's F fi- fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five long-term facilities maintenance plan, and let's see, we, do we have it?
Yep, there's a, there.
You guys have it?
No, there there was a.
Here it is, got it, okay, so could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, now, I'm gonna read this. Okay, adopting, school board resolution adopting the school district's fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan, whereas to qualify for long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota statute subdivision four states a school district or intermediate district must annually adopt and approve a ten-year facilities plan by July thirty-first for commissioner approval, whereas the school district has developed a ten-year long uh term facilities maintenance plan consistent with this law, okay, and we've got the two members that uh moved for the resolution and was seconded, um.
Can I ask a question about the facilities? So I went through all three of these, and I'll ta- I'll be honest with you, uh it it's hard to look at, and specifically because it's supposed to be a ten-year plan, but there's no dates on anything.
The the years are on the top, and it has capital and then L T F M.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
So the year that stuff is supposed to be done was at the top?
Correct, like I have it printed here, and it's twenty-three, twenty-four, and like you say, I have it printed, it actually takes two pages, I mean.
And what about how Tom explained at the last facilities meeting, how if it's not done, then it's carried over?
Well, what what happens, again, the the ten-year plan, okay, and and again, it went away, I don't know how many years ago it was in effect, and then it came back, I mean, the biggest piece is looking, and that's why it has twenty-four, twenty-five, is that's the front center which is being planned, like right now, we're doing twenty-three, twenty-four projects.
Right.
You know, and that's why, again, the ten years trying to, you know, keep things, you know, but it changes, even stuff that, you know, you approve now, we we bring it back to you, but if something comes in over budget, or on, you know, under budget, we can do more, it's a, I'm gonna say fluid document, but yeah, there's, there's a tab, if you will, for each year, and yeah, I mean, I'm just printing twenty-three, twenty-four capital, and I'm goes and dealt.
I look at this stuff on my iPad, so I think it, maybe I leave some stuff out when I look at it.
And and I'll be honest with you.
Zoom in on it to get the whole thing too.
And and I, cuz I've looked at it on even my phone, and it's phone to iPad to computers, different vision, you know, so.
All right.
Okay.
It helped too, Tom explained it really thoroughly at our last facilities meeting.
Yeah.
But again, it is fluid, that's all I'm gonna say, that, you know, if someone jumps in and we have a major issue, can move things, but that's where it can build like we do, we have six hundred, I think roughly six hundred fifty thousand sitting there that's unspent, blame it on COVID, things not getting done, and yeah.
Okay, more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, committee reports, Missy Tate, does she have something for you?
No, Miss, Missy's.
She's out of town.
Yep, she's out of town, sorry, I just.
Okay, Tim?
She just said she didn't have, I mean, enrollments, I mean, very fluid right now, we haven't gotten a huge influx, we got a couple more in this elementary kid, so I think we're up to three, um other than that, it's just ongoing planning, Tim will talk about the handbooks, we're working on handbooks, cuz a lot of changes here, it's not major elementary, I mean, there's some, the big thing is you can't um suspend anymore without major, we don't have many elementary kids that are truly suspended on a, you you know, still send a kid home for part of a day, but um.
Did I read the one right, where you can't, they can't serve detention during lunch hour or?
That's been in place for several years, where you're not supposed to take, you know, like lunch detention away, you know, use it as a discipline, now, it can be agreed, and I just throw it out there cuz it's public, is if um like a special ed student say, you know, it's overstimulation, or there can be agreements where a kid doesn't participate or has a different time, if there's a reason, but it's, hey, you goofed up, you're staying in, you're not going out, you can't do that.
Yeah, they always do that.
It's kinda like, you know, kinda wants to stay, just like you can't take food away, you know, and and hold something, you know, you're not having the pizza, you're gonna have a cold sandwich, which places did, you know, if that was, again, it's food shaming, can't do that type of thing.
Right.
Of course, it's, well, it can all be paid, so.
Yep.
That one's out, but there's just pieces um that are being, it'll come, it's not a policy, so the handbook will get out to you, um Tim will talk about the high school, um same with the other, Tim, um we're working on the activity handbook as well, so that'll be coming with some updates, and we'll we'll go from there, so.
Okay, uh Tim, do you have a, anything to say?
On the discipline?
No, discipline.
No.
Okay, we've got twelve students leaving, I'll give you an enrollment update, there's twelve students leaving the district, I've got four who transferred to Little Fork, two who went online, six who moved out of the district, the only reason I'm giving it like this is I can't get in and give you something from Skyward, because we have students who won't officially start here, the seniors have a separate calendar, as well as sixth grade coming in, they don't start till September fifth, so I can't give you a hard number. We have twenty students who are enrolling into the district, so we're up eight overall, we have twelve students coming from Indus, two from Little Fork, one from Fort Francis, one from homeschool, and four students from other districts. Uh we're holding homecoming on Friday, September twenty-second, we've already got the application in for a parade permit, so hopefully we'll have our parade on that Friday, our summer school at the high school for six through twelfth is gonna end next Thursday on the twenty-seventh, and we have had, already had thirteen students earn credit, the necessary credit that they lost, so they've made up that credit, so I think that's pretty successful so far. Uh we are beginning to get the new furniture for the student lounge in the west end for our grade six through eight, and we're also getting student desks in for four different classrooms, and we're getting some desks that are gonna be tall desks, so students can stand, we're gonna get some different seating, so we're getting things set up down in the west end, and I think I mentioned uh last spring, the west end through six through eight will be eating breakfast up in the, the old study hall, whom we're calling it the lounge now. Uh we've got, our fall sports begin captain's practice, I guess I'm stealing from the other Tim. Fall sports will begin on Monday, August seventh for captain's practice, and then official practices start for all sport, fall sports on the fourteenth, and we, like Kev mentioned, we're in the process of updating the high school handbook, there are lots and lots of changes, and we're not even sure what the changes are gonna be right now, so we're trying to interpret legislation and figure out what changes have to go in, and so we're working on updating those, and we'll present that in August, um if you have any questions on some of those.
I have a question.
Yes.
It only cuz if somebody asked it to me, and I said, I guess I don't know that anybody's ever thought of that, and I think they brought it to you, um did you ever find out, like, can they serve breakfast down there, or are there any guidelines out of the cafeteria? Okay.
There are some guidelines, but we're gonna be able to meet those guidelines, the students have to actually either punch a number in or use their fingerprint, and we're gonna get the machine down there, and we'll have food service personnel down there, we've already looked into uh some serving equipment that'll keep things hot and cold, so we we're addressing that, so yeah, we're gonna be fine as far as the legality end of that.
Okay, perfect.
And one thing about lunch detention, we have a lot of students at the high efficiency a lot, but we have a fair number who like to do that, because if they're an athlete or they have, they work after school or before school, they're able to use that lunchtime if they have a detention to serve, so I'm looking into whether or not we can continue to do that for students who want to do that, we're not taking their lunch away.
Can you go to athletics if you have detention that day?
Yes, you can, detention you can, you can, if you have in-school suspension.
Just not suspension, okay.
In-school suspension or out-of-school suspension, you're not able to participate in activities that day.
But detention you can.
Detention you can, so there are students who like the ability to be able to do that, and it, we actually would go after kids and say, hey, you got detention, instead of letting this roll into a day of in-school suspension, why don't you do two lunches and get this taken care of, so it wasn't so much a negative thing for those students, and we weren't taking their lunch away, they kinda lost the social aspect a little bit, but it was, I think, more positive than negative.
Yeah, yeah.
The other piece with that, high school really doesn't have go out, you you know, and so I guess the argument, and sometimes it's better to um not ask, you 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 know, is, we're not taking, now again, certain grades, we open the gym up and let shoots and basketball, but you wanna sit in the hall and do nothing, which, you know, elementary, you have to go out, you know, and of course, they wanna go out at that age, and so here we're just saying, you know, if you wanna do something, you can do that.
Better to ask for forgiveness than permission in some situation.
In that case, certain things I'd say, we gotta ask, and you know, find out before we do something, but so.
Nothing's black and white.
Okay, now we're moving into your report.
Yeah, so I think we've hit on a good chunk of things, the handbooks I mentioned are coming out, um just a couple reminders, July twenty-fourth and August first, this is par negotiations for for um the ones that are on that, Tony, Jessica, and Joanne, just a reminder, again, August twenty-second, I think is a day after our um next board meeting, um but that is the first five-ten negotiations, so I'm just, that's Rox, Tony, and and then my next question was, we have an opening, cuz Emily was on that, so um I just thought of that when I was making notes this afternoon, um Rox, to put you on the spot, I forgot to mention, um in the next few weeks or something, or at some point, you you're gonna need to come up with another person to serve, either um like I said, Dale, if he wants to get his feet wet in negotiations, would be an option, or you can ask someone else, it's your, but I'm just saying, August twenty-second and twenty-third, we have back-to-back days, just a reminder.
Is there a time set for that already?
There is, I didn't write the time down.
Probably an email, okay.
Um I I can get, I wanna say it was eleven o'clock or ten o'clock one day, and maybe eleven the next day, I think, I can look on my phone, Tony, in a minute, um just so you're aware, uh the bulk school mailing um is is going again, and and that was taken,[1791.85] Um, just so you're aware, uh, the bulk school mailing, um, is, is going again and, and that was taken, I think, taken over, taken on by the grant and, um, community ed together or whatever. It's set to be mailed August twenty-first. And I've just thrown out there, so it's kinda public, you know, it's, it's about, um, two weeks before the start of school roughly. Um, and so we'll get some more information out, but, um, that's when that's coming. August thirtieth is meet the teacher, um, night. I'm again, just trying to get some PR stuff out there. Again, I'll go on the radio as we hit August here and get it out. But, you know, people start wondering when that mailing's coming. Uh, I did wanna mention that elementary-wise, uh, the class, um, assignments came out. If someone didn't get one, you know, by all means, we, we wanna know, um, you know, you'd have to contact either email or leave a message. But we're, we're hoping we got everyone that's enrolled at this point. Um, and the last thing I have is, just so you're aware, the, the rec commission is done. We are actually meeting, I'm meeting with Betty, um, tomorrow to, um, if you will, divvy up the physical assets and then I guess, well, and, and again, I'll just throw it out there. How I think it's gonna go. There's, there's an oh-eight truck and a two thousand fourteen truck and a plow that was on that oh-eight truck. So those are two items. There's, um, an old mower that is not, um, running and it's really not, well, it's. Um, well, it's a commercial mower. It's actually, it's an oh-nine. It's, it's, it's just, it's identical to one we have, so we may see if we can do something with it. There's a, um, two thousand fourteen trailer that has hauled the mowers. There's a two thousand twenty-one commercial mower. Yeah, and, and that's, that's the items. So for the most part, we've put values on them. I think the city's gonna keep everything, meaning the older truck and plow. I think, don't quote me here, um, keep the trailer and the mower. That value comes out to be about the same as the two thousand fourteen truck. We would keep that truck. And I think, like I said, we're gonna take that mower and either see if, Gene, Gina would like to look at it. He's worked on ours and he thinks it's, you know, it's, it's just, it's not running. They, their mechanic, I don't wanna say it wasn't successful, hasn't, hasn't gotten a go ahead, maybe hasn't put any time in, cause they really don't need it or something. But if it's worthwhile, we wanna get it. It's only valued at between a thousand and two thousand dollars if it was going. Um, if not, it's gonna go on the city, um, like unused equipment.
You can just use it for parts?
Well, we, we, he, if he can't get it going, he doesn't think it's worth keeping, you, you know, for parts. I mean, um, with the one we have, not to say s, a spring can't go or something, but it's not worth paying, cause we're gonna, either the values, we're off, I think, four thousand dollars. We'll get that money or, you know, when we split the money up eventually. So to pay a thousand or two thousand bucks, we're probably just better off.
You could get, gotcha.
Let it go. I don't know what we'll get. Now, if they can get it going, or he thinks, hey, it's worth putting a thousand dollar engine in, we might take it. You know, or two, I, I don't know. So anyway, that's where we're at, and my guess is it'll come to you for formal approval. But the reason we wanna get it divvied up, like they took the old truck, they got insurance on it, it's going, I want something in writing to say a kid got hurt on one of those mowers. You know, I want our name off of that. The same, the truck isn't being used out here. We, if it's gonna be ours, we gotta get insurance on it and, you, you know. But get things split, get signatures. My gut is, it'll have to go to both boards to say, you approved this, but.
So what would we do with that truck? Will it go to Ringhafer? Cause didn't go Lisa drive it?
No, the, R A D has not had a vehicle. That came from the rec department.
Okay.
So our plan right now is we have an old blue truck that is in chock, would be to get this one set up and then put that one for sale. I mean, um, it's just, it's in bad shape.
So what's it used for, the truck though? Like who uses it?
You mean the one out here?
Yeah.
The one out here Bill had from the rec department.
Okay.
Because for him running to Cary Park, he had it, he drove it back and forth to home every day. It was his vehicle, it had been that way. As A D, we've never had a vehicle, just like, you know. You, you don't have one for me or you don't have one. I mean, Tom gets one from the garage each day, you know, and Tom's, so it'll be custodian. No, like I said, we have an old blue one. I don't have in front of me what year it is. It's rusted out completely. The box has to come off. I think it's been welded, the frame. It needs to go.
It's in bad shape.
Correct it is.
That one is what custodians use as a travel back and forth.
They actually do some plowing with it, so that's why we wanna either, um, we're gonna take the plow off it, probably need never bump mounts. Get it put on this truck, assuming, like I said, it all works out. Um, new, whatever you call it, controller, wiring harness, I think is what they said they would need. Get it set up, then we'll just, like you say, best offer on that truck type deal. That's what we've done and you get five hundred bucks for it or a thousand or whatever. Two thousand, whatever you may get, we'll get and again, we'll be better positioned.
Rich.
Well, no, the, the, the fund piece, there are significant funds, a couple hundred thousand, whatever, that's gotta sit for a while to make sure there's still bills coming in and, um, I could say Stacy and Betty are on that account now down at Bremer and it'll sit till roughly, probably December, November, I don't know. Till Bremer's okay saying there hasn't been activity for two months or three months and then it'll be divided fifty-fifty, whatever's left in there.
I think, uh, you wanna point out that the money that's divvied up, it's, it's gonna be, it has to be assigned to kids.
Correct, it'll be, well, it'll be.
Can't just go in the general fund.
Well, it can be used for activities. Again, I'm, I'm gonna go back to, you, you know, um, like you say, which.
Yeah.
However you wanna look at it, you're paying an activity person a coordinator, you know, you're paying, I don't know how we're gonna, we'll probably have to track it somehow, but, you know, just like this year, I mean, activity, you could pay half your A D out of it or, you know, transportation, we'll do whatever we have to to track.
Okay, um, anything else from you, Kevin?
No.
Okay, and then Beth, does she have a report?
Nope, she didn't. Um, they are at a conference.
Okay.
And so she just, she texted me saying.
Can I just ask you really quick, will Tim be added into these administrative reports then as like a number five, Ringhafer?
If you want him here on a regular basis, I mean, we, we haven't had an A D.
I think that would be beneficial.
Okay, the, the only thing I'm gonna throw out there is keep in mind how many nights, you, you know, he is.
Yeah.
Right, but even if he sent a report, just to, you know, a monthly report to say this is how this went or, I mean, the sports are just as important to talk about as everything else too, so.
Good idea.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, ju, just before we go, and I wish we would have, what, what would you like on there? And what I'm asking is, do you want a win-loss of every activity? Do you want, I'm just asking for, I mean, what are you looking for?
No, I mean, like Tim just said, oh, I, I stole your thunder or whatever, you know, like just things like that, that he can talk about. You know, this is, I mean, cause everything before was on a different website, so now we're gonna be using a different website or going to Skyward for all the activity fees and, I mean, I just feel like it's helping the communication flow, so we're all involved together at a table, and then as he's out in the community, if stuff comes up, he can bring it back to.
Yeah, I think maybe he can come up with an agenda.
Okay, we'll, we'll give it a trial and if there's something that you're not hearing that you'd like, cause like I say, I'm, I mean, if you wanna win-loss, that's easy enough to, you know, put together, but I don't know if that's really what you're looking for more, that, you know, sign-ups are coming, at least in my mind, sign-ups are coming for.
Or we have coaches or we don't have coaches or.
So we can help figure it out on different things.
Participation numbers.
Yes.
Gotcha, yep.
Okay, and now we're gonna go into closed session to discuss both negotiations and, oh, do you want me to read this statement? The meeting will.
You should, yeah.
Okay, the meeting will be closed as permitted by Minnesota statute section thirteen D point zero-three to conduct a performance review of Superintendent Kevin Grover. And then should I add that we're gonna talk about negotiations as well for what it?
Local forty-seven ninety-eight.
Forty-seven ninety-eight.
Just an update.
Okay, so we will.
No, we need a motion in a second, technically to close.
Tina motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in closed session now.